Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, September 22 Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:00 this evening for discussion of employment of employee negotiations, setting price for sale or lease of property owned by the district, and the approval of the August 11th and September 8th closed session minutes. And the board will be returning to closed session after the meeting as well. We have seven board members present, none absent this evening. Can you please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two sections of our board meeting this evening. The first is, as mandated by law, the budget public hearing, which we'll call to order in a second. There will be public comments available for that section, for that hearing. Then there will also be public comments available for our regular board meeting. So we're going to call to order the budget public hearing, and then we will adjourn that section of the meeting, and then call to order again the regular board meeting. So, again, we have seven board members present. This is the budget public hearing, none absent, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Moore.
Chris Walton will report a synopsis of the key points here for you.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to go through all of the documents that we have on board docs here available. The legal budget form is the first document that is the legal budget that will be approved tonight. Then we have the final revenue budget by fund, the final expenditures budget by fund, a final budget summary, any adjustments, budget adjustments between the tentative budget and the final budget with explanations, staffing analysis, and then the PowerPoint that I'll be talking about right now. But all of those are out there available. So can we go to the PowerPoint? I'm not going to go through in detail all the changes from the tentative budget. We have a list of them out there available for everyone. But the first one we have here is we moved the impact fees from the education fund to the operation and maintenance fund. That's for additional properties. The ones we're getting this year are mainly the new construction that was the old Elmhurst Hospital by Field School. And we thought it'd be better to have those in the operation and maintenance fund so that for additional maintenance or building additions, that sort of thing that might be needed for the additional students that we will be enrolling in our schools from those new properties. So those impact fees are in the operations and maintenance fund, and we increased the budget for those impact fees. We received a revised estimate from the State Board of Ed for general state aid, so that was increased $200,000 from $2.9 million to $3.1 million. And then the TIF 1 surplus distribution. The tentative budget I had neglected to budget for the $100,000 that we hadn't received from the city yet for TIF 1 surplus distribution. On the expenditure side, we do a lot of it. The tentative budget, we have a lot of estimates in there before we get the staffing finalized. So the salaries and benefits are just updated with more current, accurate information. And then we had some revised amounts for purchase services and supply budgets. So just minor adjustments that we made between the tentative and the final.
David, could you go to the revenues?
Would I page?
Yes.
So I just want to talk a little bit about the mix of our operating revenues. We receive 90 percent, 90.44 percent of our revenues from the local funds. So that line there, 101,697,880 of the 112,444 is 90 percent of our revenues in local. And the biggest source of our revenue there is property taxes, $94,717,100 in our operating funds. That's 84.23 percent of our total operating budget is property taxes. In the state revenues, we receive, as I said earlier, general state aid is 3.1 million. And then special ed and transportation are categorical grants, and those are 3.8 million. So between general state aid and mandated categoricals is 6.9 million. I just point that out because when we talk about, when Senate Bill 1 came up, those are the lines that are talked about when Senate Bill 1 is being discussed, is the general state aid, 3.1, and then the special education, $2,791,250 there, and then the regular and special ed transportation. And then, so the state funding, $7,220,000, that is 6.42 percent of total operating budget. And then the federal grants represent 3.14 percent. And if you look at the federal grants, most of it is idea funding. That's 1.5 million. Title 1 is 500,000, and then the national school lunch is 620,000. So I just wanted to make sure we went over the mix of revenues. If you could go back to the PowerPoint. And this slide just compares the state average, which has local being 66 percent, federal 7.9, state 26.1, where our mix of revenues is 90.44 for local and state 6.42 and federal 3.14. And our revenues, 84.23 percent is property taxes. Property taxes are limited to CPI increases, which has averaged 2.3 percent over the last 10 years and 1.7 percent over the last five. And then in the second, in this budget, we have the second installment, the fall taxes of the 2014 extension, which was based on a 1.5 CPI, and the first installment of June 2016 of the 2015 extension, which is a 0.8 percent increase. Just on the mandated categoricals, back in 14, we actually received the June payment in June. That's when the state got all caught up. And then in 15, we received and we budgeted for three payments. So the June payment did not come in in June. It was not received until July. And so in this budget, we budgeted three payments, which is a conservative estimate because it includes the last quarter from 15 and two quarters of 16. And it assumes that we will finish two quarters behind. So that's conservative budgeting on the categorical payments. We'll see how it ends up, but we have three payments in this budget. On the expenditure side, we know that we're a service organization, so most of our expenditures are in staffing. So the salaries at 63.56 percent of the operating budget and benefits, 14.07 percent. So about 75 percent of the operating expenditures are related to staffing. So I wanted to put in here information about the staffing, which shows the number of employees we have has increased steadily over the years. But in this budget year, overall, the staffing has decreased 14.1. But in certified staff, we had a 7.9 increase in the number of certified staff. So then in our final budget summary here, we show 112,444,000 in operating revenues with 112,279,338 of operating expenditures, which gives us a operating surplus. It's almost a break even at 164,662 in the operating funds. In the non-operating funds, we show the 1.5 million expenditure there in this budget for capital projects were the maintenance projects done this past summer, which they're done in the summer and then they're paid for in July, August. So that 1.5 million is spent on the projects we did this past summer. The ending fund balance of 1.3 million is the projects that will be done next summer. But in the revenues, in the 1.4 million revenue is 100,000 of the TIF 1 surplus distribution that we should have received back in January. We're hoping to get that in the next couple of months. And then the next, in January, we should, it's projected, or it was projected, that we would get 1.3 million coming up in January. So that's the 1.4 million in revenues in the capital projects line. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, that's the summer maintenance projects that we do every summer on our buildings. And then that service is just to pay, that's just the property taxes we receive for the bonds on our regular bond schedule that we receive and pay every year. So then the next steps, we talk in Finance Committee about in monitoring our actual budget every month. We will be working closely with PMA, and PMA will be doing five-year projections, so we will be sending them. I actually already sent them this budget. The audit will be done in December. Enrollment projections are based on October 1, September 30. So in October, we will be doing projections, enrollment projections. Then we also give PMA scattergrams, staffing, and other assumptions. Then the audit report is approved in December. We have the tentative levy in November, the final levy in December. Then starting, we start working on next year's budget by estimating staffing at the January 12th board meeting. And then the PMA then uses those staffing projections that we get in January 12, and they come out and do their PMA projections January 26, which helps for the staffing for the following budget year. So that is it for the final budget presentation. Any questions?
Just to be clear, the capital projects fund balance is based upon us receiving a million for TIF surplus distributions. If that does not come in, it would appear that there's going to be no money for projects next summer. So I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that we're going to have to come up with a million, or whatever's not given, provided to us, we're going to have to come up with in the budget. Or, I mean, these aren't discretionary. They are somewhat discretionary. I mean, these are maintenance projects. These are fixing parking lots and chillers on roofs and things like that. So that's a potential negative variance to the budget, should it not happen, which is a pretty big hole that we would have to fill.
Frank Shu will be speaking at the October 20 Finance and Operations Committee discussing next summer's projects and our long-term facility maintenance plan. So at that time, we could discuss that further. The fallback position would be the operations and maintenance fund, which obviously is funded by our operating and maintenance tax levy.
So, and then when we talk to Frank, can we just talk about, a little bit about timing and when we have to make commitments to spend money versus when we know whether we're going to get it or not? That would be helpful for the next meeting.
Right.
Thanks.
Chris, as a point of clarification, the money we're talking about, the million three that we project will be paid to us in January of 2016, and the $100,000 that we were projecting was going to be paid to us in January 15, but has not been paid, is a result of the 2004 intergovernmental agreement with the city, where some of the properties from TIF 1 were released. And then to make the city whole, or the agreement was that both entities would be made whole, the city first. After they were made whole, they were required to declare a surplus, and that had always been projected to be the first piece of that surplus in the calendar year 2015, and then in its entirety, beginning in the calendar year 2016. So that's the money that we're talking about, just for clarification. John?
In talking to the city about these TIF releases, it sounded to me like the city feels it needs to know the EAV before it can make the release. And so it would be in March when the final EAV is known, when they would have the information about the release. I didn't go into it with detail, but that's what I was told. So maybe we can track down that timing a little bit better with the city on this. But I do know that an expectation that it happened in January is, in their feeling, it's not, or what was expressed to me by them was, it was not doable.
They're saying we would expect that in March of each year. Is that your understanding?
What was communicated to me is they'll have the information necessary to do the release in March when the EAV is published.
Okay. So we would get that money in our fiscal year 2016, which ends June 30, 2016?
I think we need to confirm that with the city and get an explicit statement from the city, what their intention is on this. It is a contractual obligation. I would expect them to do it as quickly as possible.
All right. Thank you, John. Anything else for Chris? Letting you off easy, Chris. Thanks very, very much. Now, I don't have any public comment cards up here, but this is an opportunity for public comments specifically about this budget hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to make a public comment? Hearing none. That is the end of the agenda for the public budget hearing. So given that there is nothing else on the agenda, I declare the public budget hearing adjourned. And we will now call to order our originally scheduled Board of Education meeting. And the first thing on that agenda is public comments. So is there anyone here with public comments for our regularly scheduled board meeting? Hearing none. I'll move on to approval of board meeting minutes. This is the approval of board meeting minutes from August 11, 2015, and September 8, 2015. Are there any changes to either of those meetings' minutes? And hearing none, then those minutes stand as submitted. Next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Moore for the superintendent's agenda.
So the first item is consent agenda. So would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
John?
I move we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through F. Item F being approval of the consent agenda. So maybe it's A through E.
It's A through E, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Whatever it is, I move for approval of all items on the superintendent's consent agenda.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Moved by John, seconded by Shannon. Is there any discussion, or are there any items anybody wants removed? I should have asked for that first. I apologize. From the superintendent's consent agenda. No items for removal, no discussion. Amy, all yours.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Ms. Bestidell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The consent agenda passes. Next is the action items for the superintendent's agenda. Dr. Moore?
Okay. The first is approval of the extension of the use of the drive that runs adjacent to the Bethel Church property and Sandberg Middle School. We've been in agreement with them, and it is up for an extension for the next five years. It is a relatively routine matter, except for the fact that some maintenance on that road is due within the next two years, and we have an agreement through Frank's budgeting and the church when that would take place. And that was explained in the packet.
Any discussion regarding that agreement between the school district and Bethel Church for the co-use of that driveway? John?
Let me say, as a former Sandberg parent, this explains a lot. It looks like a very good deal to let the parties share a driveway. I'm sorry, as a real estate attorney and a former Sandberg parent, this answers a lot of questions that nobody else in the world had.
And we're just, we're approving the agreement, not the expenditure of money here. Is that correct?
That's correct. I just wanted to make people aware that in the agreement, there's an expectation that we maintain that property, and it is up for some scheduled maintenance. But you are approving the extension of the agreement. That's all.
Okay. So can I have a motion? Thank you, Emily.
I move that the Board of Education approve the driveway use and license agreement with Bethel United Church of Christ, allowing for a five-year extension.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by Margaret. Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Second, item B, Dr. Moore.
I'm aware of a rumor that there have been some discussions in Elmhurst regarding the Madison School property and an agreement with the city, an intergovernmental agreement with the city, related to stormwater. And after many exhaustive conversations, and Shannon and John were board representatives in those conversations, the board, as I understand it, has reached consensus that we are ready to approve that intergovernmental agreement. And so it is on the agenda for that purpose, and we would need a motion to do so.
I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Elmhurst and the school district. Emily, thank you. Oh, I am. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Elmhurst and the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 for the construction, operation, and maintenance of stormwater and other improvements at Madison Early Childhood Center.
And a second? Second. Moved by Emily, seconded by Shannon. Any discussion?
We've had a number of public sessions on this, and it seems to be attended largely by folks that are interested in stormwater, and that's appropriate. They're very much interested in the result of the process. But I always made sure, after a couple tries, to read the mission statement of our district at the top of the meeting before we spoke. And our mission is to meet the educational needs of all students, challenging each to his or her full potential and ensuring a foundation for future success in life, to focus the community on what our role should be. But I would always follow that up by saying, with that said, I want to remind folks that these families affected by flooding are our families too. Many have kids in schools, and they're all taxpayers, and we want to help them and be part of the solution. So after discussing the intergovernmental agreement for over a year, having exchanged countless drafts of language, having structured and restructured the agreements, discussed nuances of the language in both the public forum and, more effectively, with the attorneys present to help guide discussions and narrow the issues, we reached the agreement that we're considering tonight. Tonight, we're prepared to approve, I hope we're prepared to approve the agreement and thereby permit the city to get started on constructing its stormwater facilities on District 205 property at our Madison Early Childhood Center. And from the outset, we said that we're the trustees of our student's school property, and then we carefully manage it to try and meet the needs of all District 205 kids. And the city's agreed with us, with our resolution that we passed last September, that these sites must continue to be used for their intended primary purpose, and that is education, with the additional benefit of stormwater improvement for the adjacent neighborhoods. We believe, Shannon and I worked hard on this and in consultation with the rest of the board, and we believe that this agreement, before the board meets that condition, allowing the city to use school property without paying compensation beyond the limited cost of constructing an accessible playground for our early childhood students attending Madison The agreement provides that the city will decide what stormwater facilities it needs to build, and the district will decide when, if, and to what extent the district needs the property to be returned to its primary educational usage. Beyond that, the city will bear all costs, all liabilities, and all risks, including the risk of the school board determining to restore the property to its educational purpose. And most importantly, to some of us here on the board, the city will ensure that any unsafe condition on school property is addressed immediately and completely. So with the document signed, the city says that it'll have final design completed in three to six months, and the project built in another three to six months. So we should get this agreement signed, let the city get their shovels in the ground, do what was promised to our residents and taxpayers, and turn our attention back to where it belongs on education. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you, John. Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with what you said, and I wanted to reiterate that the school district owns the property, so we did not compromise that and have, we didn't hamper any, this board or any future board. We did not hamper them to be able to make choices about the use of that land. So for now, we thought we can be good partners and share the land and still maintain an agreement that gives us maximum flexibility.
This has been a process that's taken quite a while, and hundreds of hours put in. So let me say thank you to John and Shannon for the effort you put in to bring this agreement forward. Thank you very much for all of your work. Thank you very much for all of your time. Chris, comment?
Yeah, and I think, I wrote some of this down so as not to go too far out of bounds. So if I reiterate some of what you said, John, I apologize, but it was a good thought. First, yeah, thank you to you and Shannon for your patience and time getting us to this point. I think, just ahead of voting on this, I just, this has been an issue that's been discussed in many different forums in this town for a while and I think it's only appropriate to acknowledge the feedback I know I've received, I know everyone's received feedback. I mean, I've heard from people expressing support and a desire to help the homeowners impacted by the flooding, there were people asking us to speed up the process, there were others asking us to make sure we make a fair deal while protecting the kids. I've heard from folks calling, asking us to stop the city's plans, arguing that it doesn't solve the problem, it's too expensive for the number of homes impacted, it will take taxpayer money that otherwise could be used for new schools. So I recognize that there are two sides to this. I've even had a couple of people suggest we force a referendum to make sure the entire community has a chance to weigh in. But again, in light of this, and I think John summarizes this the best, the context from my decision-making process really started with first and foremost, we've been entrusted by the community with the education of our kids. This is our mission. And as such, the lens that I bring to this, as we look at this with respect to the project, is our obligation to ensure the safety of the kids, to avoid incremental costs that would take money from the classroom, to maintain the usability of the facilities for our children and programs, to maintain the ownership of the property and the flexibility to reclaim the land for legitimate district needs, and to indemnify the district from any liability. And as we move forward, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, there are additional steps in this process and we welcome feedback and your concerns with respect to these issues. But I do think in contrast, I don't believe it's our job to evaluate the city's broader plan, its costs, or how much they're going to raise our property taxes to pay for it. The city council and the mayor were elected to do this and are accountable to the community for this portion of the plan. I would encourage anyone who has feedback and concerns about these aspects of this to contact their alderman and/or the mayor. That said, I do believe we have an obligation to point out to the taxpayer that District 205 has significant facilities needs and the community and the city should please take this into account when considering what the property taxpayer can afford to fund. But in summary, I do believe that this agreement adequately addresses District 205's key obligations as an educational institution. And for that reason, I will support the IGA and look forward to returning to talking about education at the board table.
Emily?
I don't have too much to add, just that, you know, I'm glad that we are finally taking a vote on this. I think we haven't always agreed on the best approach to this, you know, that the city approached us with, but I think we all agree that this is not why we ran for school board and, you know, I think everyone up here takes their job very seriously as stewards of tax dollars and, you know, to try to provide the best education possible for children. And I thank you guys all for your time, especially Shannon and John. And Jim, I know you were a pin chitter at a couple meetings, so thank you.
As were you, Emily, thank you. All right. Then, this does not require a voice vote, does it? Does it require a roll call vote? No, we're not spending money? Okay? No, all right, then, Amy? Yeah, better safe than sorry. Amy, we'll call upon your services here.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yea.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of revolution, of resolution, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Clearly here, we are spending money. Can I have a motion, please? Emily?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2015, 16 as recommended and that the president and secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by John, any discussion? Had a pretty, yeah, we had a pretty thorough discussion earlier. John, if you've got something to add, please?
No, I just want to say this was the result of a lot of hard work, thank you very much to all who participated.
Thank you. The documentation provided to us was extremely thorough, thank you. The explanation was clear and, you know, through our committee process, this is a year-round budgeting process, so thank you for everyone involved. With that, Amy?
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, the budget is passed. Next is the approval of District Management Council proposal for middle school study. Can I have a motion and then we can have some discussion? Karen?
I move that the Board of Education approve the District Management Council proposal to improve programming for students and increase academic return on investment at a cost of $75,000 per year for three years. I'd like to add middle school. Student, okay.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret, any discussion? I think we'd be well, yeah, we'd be well off to start with just a quick overview by Dr. Moore.
There's been a joint agreement between and among a variety of levels of this organization, teachers, administrators, board members primarily, that we need to take a look at our middle school operations in terms of our things related to staffing patterns, things related to curricular offerings, enrichments and interventions and enrichments, minutes of instruction, consistency among the three sites in terms of our programming. There have been, and this has been an ongoing thing that, at least my understanding is this is not a new conversation, but it has risen to the fore lately for a variety of reasons, in that we're, you know, we want to analyze our improvement initiatives, we want to take a look at our resource allocation, all of those types of things that we talk about regularly. And cabinet believed that this was the best place for us to start in terms of some immediate, potential immediate adjustments in next year in terms of our operations at the middle school level. So we did join, based on some conversations that we had with the board and its interest in the concept of academic return on investment, we joined an organization called the District Management Council. And the whole philosophy that they have is that we are in an era of increasing demands for improving achievement with increasingly complex issues in our society that affect our children and a variety of different, other societal things related to resources such as aging demographics, economic stagnation, et cetera, to where we have the likelihood of no expectation for new money into a system that is experiencing increasing demands. So how do you look at your operation with those competing factors at stake? This organization has consulted with school districts around the country of all types and in a variety of ways and has successfully demonstrated an ability to do what its core mission is, which is to improve achievement, improve instruction, improve schedules, get efficiencies, and do things where you can, don't put things into an either-or conversation, but you get creative through some intelligent analysis and you get both improvement and efficiencies. And so it's our recommendation that this outside lens would be an appropriate way to make sure that we get the best results possible as we embark on this. And we feel that this organization is the best available option for us to do that. The intent is that they would not just come in and do a study and give us recommendations, but also work with us during the implementation to partner with us and our faculty and the people on an internal committee to help make those, the implementation of whatever plans we put forward successful, so we actually see the results that we hope to get and have this work actually come to fruition as opposed to perhaps having, you know, several good ideas just remain dormant and not actually get implemented. So that's an overview. There are, you know, some more specific examples of the districts that the organization's worked with, but I would say this, the five areas that they intend to look at would be codify the school's priorities and theory of action for serving students, review each school's program offering, use of time and schedules, review supports and services for struggling and gifted students, review the cost-effectiveness of staffing patterns and practices, create and help implement a phased-over plan for continuous improvement. So that is the proposal that you are being asked to approve.
Can I just start the questions with, can you give us a little background on who the District Management Council is and what their qualifications are?
The District Management Council, the CEO of District Management Council is, works out of Harvard University and is a co-chair and core faculty member of the Harvard University Public Education Leadership Project, which is a joint project between the Harvard Graduate School of Education and the Harvard Business School. So these people are a combination of educational, people with expertise in education, public policy, economics, it's an eclectic mix of people that have come together around the concept of the importance of public schools in this country, so they have a shared value. It's not, it's not an ideological think tank, it's not solely a, an institution that comes from one point of view or another, it uses the expertise of a variety of people to work with school districts with the value of the importance of strong public schools in this country.
Have they done work in Illinois or are they exclusively an East Coast institution?
No, they do work with, they do work with districts all over the country. The districts that are members of the organization that I'm aware of in Illinois are Indian Prairie, Elgin, Rockford, Moline, hopefully us, but those are the, those are the ones that I know of, that doesn't mean there might not be some others, but there are many in Minnesota, some in Wisconsin, Texas, West Coast, all over the country, all different sizes, so it, well, its home base is Boston, it is not a regional organization by any means.
Karen? Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Absolutely, no, thanks for setting the stage. And just a little bit more about setting the stage, I know that it's been, what, over nine years since I was a parent with a middle school and I know that these things were being discussed that long ago. And I know that we as a board, since we've been on the board, that we've been engaged in these conversations with, you know, the district in various different forums at all levels. And so I look forward to a very positive and productive collaboration within the district, with all of the employee groups, and not only through the, receiving the recommendations with openness, but working through all the way to implementation and seeing the results. So that's, I'm really looking forward to having this process put in place and for us to be doing it in parallel with the community engagement process so that we can continue to get that community input along with it, and I know that this organization, you know, can link with that. So I like the fact that they have looked across the nation, that they have proven best practices that they can bring to us with all that data that is proven. And so I thank you for doing the research and bringing these things to us so that we can finally get started.
Margaret, go ahead.
Again, also just voicing my support, if we're taking a look at this, what we're doing, we're bringing together, we've got an external piece, an external objective viewpoint, we've got internal staff looking at this process, and we also have the opportunity for community engagement. So for me, when we're putting together a process, we have a perfectly balanced opportunity with the three key segments being representative and sharing information to move forward for a perfect platform. And I think this is, this is a great opportunity to move forward with that.
Anyone else? Well, one thing I'll add to that is, whenever I hear consultant, I cringe and I think, why, why are we spending money on a consultant? And then you have to grip the reality that there are only seven unit districts in Illinois that spend less per pupil on administrative costs than District 205 does. So first of all, we just don't have the staff to take on a project like this. Second of all, I think Margaret summed it up eloquently, that this is a group that brings a unique perspective with unique capabilities and a proven track record of success to our district and I expect them to be as successful here as they have been in other places. So, that's my perspective. Anything else? Should we bring it to a vote? Amy?
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yea.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes or yays, as the case may be, no nos, that motion passes. And, or no nays, as the case may be, thank you. One item left on the superintendent's action items, and that is approval of BWP and Associates to conduct a York High School principal search, so could I have a motion, please? Emily?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with BWP and Associates to facilitate the search for the next York High School principal at a cost of $11,900 plus expenses.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Do we need to state any background here, just to be clear?
And highlight a little bit of the process?
Go right ahead. Or we'll turn it over to Dr. Moore to do that, perfect.
The goal would be to post a position immediately and a timeframe has been established that would allow for approval at the December 15th board meeting barring any unforeseen complications, based on advice that we've gotten about the fact that a large suburban high school like this is a unique position and the pool of candidates that likely would be available for that type of a position, it was recommended that the search be conducted sooner rather than later. The proposed plan includes significant involvement of all aspects of the community from some focus group, input on the front end, to involvement on interviewing committees on the back end. So I believe that it's been a thoughtful plan that we've worked through and we believe that the timeline is manageable and we would, we would, as I said, post a position immediately and there would be some intermediate steps through the screening of candidates and all those kinds of things that are rather, you know, relatively typical to a search, but I think it's important to note that there are plans in place for involvement from a wide variety of people in, is included in this, in the plan moving forward.
Any discussion? Margaret?
Just obviously one note, that Mrs. Smith has Just obviously one note, that Mrs. Smith has notified the district of her intention to retire at the end of this 215-216 year, which is why we're moving forward with this move to replace our principal.
If I can add to that, Margaret, Diana Smith came to us, if I remember correctly, two and a half years ago with, and told the board that her, her intention to retire at the end of this school year. And the board agreed to that, and, you know, we left the communications in Ms. Smith's hands, and, you know, we've issued recently a press release telling the community. I think she let her staff know several years ago, as well as the parents at York, of her intention. So this is, should not come as a surprise to anybody. And the reason that we're hiring a search firm is this is a very special position in our district. And we want to ensure that we not only post a position and see who's applies, but we want to hire a firm to go out and proactively recruit the best possible candidates for this position. And that's what we're doing. We're not spending very much money to do it, and I think we'll get a huge return on our investment to hire BWP. So with that, any other comments? All right? Hearing none? Amy?
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yay.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
That is seven yeses and yays. No nays, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's Communication Freedom of Information Act request.
Yes, there were five. One requesting emails and documents regarding a specific topic, which was denied. One requesting information regarding student discipline, which was partially granted, partially denied. One requesting information regarding non-certified support staff, which was granted. One requesting information regarding staff, which was granted. One requesting information about adopted math and science textbooks in the district, which was granted. I also left with you a copy of an article from the Illinois School Board Journal on dual-language immersion programs that I thought you might find interesting. I know you get that publication, but in the event you skimmed over it or whatever, I thought that this had some information that you might want to, make sure you take a look at. It's, I think, a pretty well-done article.
Thank you. Any questions? Next on our agenda is board communications. I have a couple of things, but if somebody wants, somebody else has other things. All right. Item number one is tomorrow, we're going to refinance some more bonds. Originally, we had, we had planned to do it last week, but William Blair came to us last week and said, why don't we wait for the Fed to decide what they were going to do with interest rates? That turned out to be a very good call. We agreed to wait till this week. Since then, the yield on the 10-year note has dropped from 2.33% to 2.24% when I left the office today. So because of, because we waited another week, our refinancing costs should be lower. And this will be not our final leg, but our next to final leg of our refinancing, and we will have, if all things go as planned, we will have saved our taxpayers just under $15 million as of tomorrow over the life of these bonds. And that is, as I point out, something that comes directly off of property tax bills, not money that comes back to the school district to be redeployed. The second thing I want to remind everyone, and just repeat what we said last May. Last May, we were in the middle of a superintendent's search. We wanted stability, but the law calls us to elect officers in May. So what we agreed is that I would serve on for another six months, and then I would resign. Shannon would take over as president, and we had talked about swapping positions. So first of all, I want to say that at board communications in our next meeting, I'm going to resign as president. So that's not headline stuff. We've all talked about it since last May, and it's all pre-planned. However, the way I read our, our bylaws, we need an election for vice president. So if there is anyone interested in being vice president, I will do whatever the board wants me to do. I am not tied to the idea of being vice president. We have plenty of, we have six other people, excluding Shannon, five other people that that leaves, that are more than qualified to be officers of the school board. And if anyone has interest, I recommend that you contact Shannon. And I think that would probably be the best, the best way to do it, the most orderly way. So with that, are there any other, are there any other board communications? Margaret?
I just thought of one. The District 205 Foundation has a variety of different meetings that they propose with different community members, and they have asked that, if at all possible, there be a board representative at the meetings, where they go to these different community groups. If anyone is interested, the first meeting is October 28th. If, if there's someone that's interested in attending that October 28th meeting, would be great. If there's, I will also, I can attend if someone else isn't interested. And then just be aware that there will be at least two other meetings throughout the year, where there's no requirement, it's just a way for the foundation and the board to be aware of what's, what each other is doing. So we're trying to increase communication and collaboration. Questions? I'm sorry.
So, just to clarify, this would be, you know, we have a board rep to each of our schools. This would kind of be a board rep to the, to the foundation?
Yes. That's a great way to put it.
Okay. Karen?
And you have been serving that role, have you?
I have, I have not done anything. I'm just saying there were a conversation about it, and I'm saying I will step into that role if, if desired. If not, if anyone else wants to do that, I'm just letting people know that the first meeting would be October 28th, and I think there's a couple other scheduled for the year. So I'm just stating the desire for the foundation.
Margaret, would it be preferable if we left it as, if a board member has interest in participating, taking, taking that role to contact you?
That would be perfect.
Great. Okay. Emily?
Well, it's kind of anticlimactic, but since this is your last meeting as board president, I just want to say thank you very much. How long have you been in this role? Has it been?
I think it's three and a half years. Now, I, I think, I mean, if, well, I don't know, we should talk about it. If I resign at board communications, or if I resign at the beginning of the meeting, there might be one more.
Oh, so you, okay, so we may still have.
You may have to, you may have to suffer through one more.
I'll save my emotional speech for next time.
Yeah, yeah, you might want to hire some speech writers.
You, you got one more meeting to get through.
Do you want me to set some Kleenex out over there for you, too, for next time?
I think the whole room's going to need some, so just kind of.
Yeah, for the collective sigh of relief. So, all right. Anything else? That's right. All right. Then, we have upcoming meetings. Tuesday, October 13th is that meeting where I'm going to resign. It's held at 7:30 in this, in this room. Monday, October 19th is the Teaching and Learning Committee, or Learning and Teaching Committee, I'm sorry, at 7:00 PM in these rooms. Tuesday, October 20th is the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. That seems to be a trend, 7:00 PM. It used to be 6:30. Seven it is. All right. And then Tuesday, October 27th is our next, I'm sorry, is two regularly scheduled Board of Education meetings away, and that again is at 7:30 in these rooms. Now, I don't have anything left on the agenda, so this meeting? Oh, wait, go ahead.
I move that we go back into closed session for the purposes of discussing negotiations.
I didn't write myself a note.
Sorry, everybody.
Employment of employee.
Employment of employee.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All right. Emily, thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by Karen. Amy, we need a roll call vote.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays, and there will be no action coming out of closed session. So no need to stick around. Thank you.